Call the Tuscarawas Valley Local Board of Education meeting on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, in the Tresen Center to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gooding, present.
Mrs. Green.
Present.
Mrs. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Overton, present.
Mrs. Berger.
Present. At this time, we'd like to make sure everyone has an agenda. There was one online as well as at the table. So if you'd like that, you can get that. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Mr. Gooding presenting the agreement?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Well, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and this opportunity to come together as Tuskegee Valley School Board. And Lord, we thank you tonight, especially for all these students that are here tonight that are going to be recognized. We just give you praise for that. And Father, on our minds, of course, still are the Call family. We just pray that you would be with them and help them at this time. We also pray for Peter Sents as he's continuing his fight against cancer. And we lift up Mike Spillman. Lord, we just ask that you would work mightily on his behalf also with that cancer. And now, Lord, as we go about doing the business tonight, I can't not think about the graduating seniors later this month that's going to come out of this school system. We just pray for those graduating seniors. We pray for their families. We just pray blessings upon them as they would continue on with whatever their calling is going to be. So, Lord, tonight, just come, be with us. Help us make good decisions, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Dick.
Mr. Murphy, at this time, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Move on to item number two. I just wanted to share the declarations. And the mission statement, "The Tuscarawas Valley Local School District will focus on high achievement for all students by providing a challenging curriculum and a positive learning environment, as well as Board of Education goals." There are five of them. Provide a safe and positive environment for our students and staff focused on students' educational success. Provide quality education and learning opportunities for all students. Demonstrate financial responsibility and integrity by maximizing resources, spending conservatively, and operating efficiently. Maintain credibility and open communications with students, parents, staff, employers, and the community. Strive for educational equity, equality, so that all students have access to relevant and challenging academic experiences and educational resources necessary for success across race, gender, ethnicity, language, disability, family background, and/or income. Is there any, we don't have any requests for public participation, I don't believe, at this time. So moving on for that, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mrs. Berger. Two items under my superintendent's report. And I think that both of these items really reflect what you just shared in terms of the Board of Education Goals, one through five. The students that we're going to be able to recognize this evening reflect all of those things, especially when we talk about just quality, quality education and learning outcomes for our students. Mr. Phillips is not with us this evening. I believe he's still out on the baseball field with our team. And so we're honored to have Mr. Greg Dickerhoof, Assistant Principal, here to present our High School Students of the Month. So, Mr. Dickerhoof, if you want to lead off with that, that'd be great.
So. All right. Our First Student of the Month is Lily Armstrong. Lily is a senior. She is the daughter of Dan Rose Lee Armstrong of Oliver. She was nominated this month for being one of the Most Improved Students. Lily is in choir and runs track. She enjoys hanging out with friends and family, listening to music in Dayton. After graduation, Lily plans to attend Kent State U of G in elementary at Dayton. Lily Armstrong. All right. Our Fine Artist Student of the Month is Zoe McConaughey. Zoe's also a senior. She is the daughter of Jeff and Beth Kiggins of Oliver, and Sean and Rachel McConaughey of Akron. Her activities include band, speech, debate team, Hope Squad, and drama. She enjoys playing the piano, riding bikes, cooking, and hanging out with friends. And Zoe plans to attend Kent State and major in Theater Studies. Zoe McConaughey. Next up, we have two Athletes, Athletes of the Month. First is Brooke Oliver. Brooke is a senior. She is the daughter of Chris and Jill Oliver of Oliver. She was nominated for outstanding effort in softball so far this spring. She's also a member of the Varsity Club and the Ski and Board Club. She enjoys hiking, surfing, snowboarding, and hanging out with friends and family. Brooke tends to, plans to attend Cleveland State for the Pre-Physician Assistant Program and also play softball there. Brooke Oliver. Next Athlete of the Month is Macy Hicks. Macy is a senior. She's the daughter of Shay and Amber Hicks of Oliver. She is a member of Hope Squad, Varsity Club. She played on the state qualifying volleyball team and was nominated for her excellence in track and field. She enjoys spending time with her family and friends, working out, and hanging with her cat. After graduation, she plans to attend Malone to study social work and run track. Macy Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerhoof. And before we transition to the Summa cum laude honors, I want to just, on behalf of our board, Lily, Zoe, Brooke, Macy, congratulations. Thank you so much. The board hears me say this every single month. We've got the best students here at Tuskegee Valley, and you guys are the epitome of that. And you were not just nominated by accident. You, this was intentional. This was on purpose. So, on behalf of our Board of Education and your peers and the entire staff here at Tuskegee Valley, congratulations. We are extremely proud of each and every one of you. So, way to go and keep it up. Now, we're going to. And now, it's our honor to transition to recognize our Summa cum laude graduating seniors from the high school, T D H S class of two thousand twenty-one. Summa cum laude is representing top honors, the highest of honors here at Tuskegee Valley Local Schools. We made this transition several years ago, moving away from recognition of only two students, valedictorian and salutatorian, to, and it wasn't about lowering or leveling the playing field. It was, it was actually quite the opposite. It was ramping up everything to exceed expectations and give every student every opportunity to hit high levels. And they know what, they know what is required in order to do that. So, Mr. Dickerhoof, if you would be willing to lead through this as well, we would greatly appreciate to recognize our Summa cum laude students.
All right. So, our Summa cum laude students, Joy Lynn Beach. Hayden Daniel Berger. Catherine Jean Christ. Sydney Marie Clements. Griffin Dean McConaughey. Sawyer Ellis Ramsey. Kaia Lauren Russell. Brianna Sue Swinter.
Because you're not in the camera. Just your chest. Far the back, far the back. Back to the table, guys. And could I have you switch your cameras?
Yes.
And you switch your cameras. Thank you. And then you guys kind of.
Somebody for all the turns.
It'll work a lot. Ready? Okay, now, smile.
Kind of hard with the mask on.
Thanks for fixing that for us, Sally.
And Mrs. Green, if you'd like to, and if the students are comfortable with it, if you'd like to take your mask off for one photo, I think that would be great.
I think that's a good idea.
People often do that. Now you're getting really smart.
Congratulations, Summa cum laude winners, award, award, awardee. Tomorrow night is our High School Senior Scholar Banquet, and each and every one of these five young people are going to be recognized once again, as well as students that have achieved cum laude and magnitude cum laude, as well as scholarships and all those kinds of things. So, once again, congratulations, top honors. We are extremely proud of you guys. So, well done. Let's give them one more round of applause. And Mrs. Berger, I could talk a lot about a lot of different things that are happening here at the end of the school year, but you all are aware of them, and I try my best to communicate in lots of different ways. And we will be sure to continue to update folks on terms of, in terms of graduation, senior other celebrations, senior parade, the Scholar Banquet tomorrow night, a lot of different things. And it's not just here at the high school level, but literally across the district with concerts and programs and awards and end-of-year recognition things. And we're grateful that we get to do it. It may be a little bit different. It may look and feel a little bit different, but we are moving forward. And I'm so proud of our staff, so proud of our kids and our families. So, that concludes my report. Thank you. And Mr. Dickerhoof, thank you so much for filling in tonight.
At this time, we're going to continue with our agenda. You're welcome to leave if you would like. And again, just to clarify, just make sure everyone's continuing to check the Tuskegee Valley website for all those good things happening in the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Now, moving on to item number five, new business and consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A. one through twenty-one?
I make the motion.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? I would like to just point out that something new that we started on item number nineteen is approving the process to support the goals of the Board of Education. And, you know, just as we hold high standards for evaluations of our teachers and students and everybody, administrators, our, our School Board of Education is now going to self-evaluate and make sure that we're providing quality services and doing what we need to be doing as a board. So, I want to acknowledge Sally Green for putting this together and helping us, you know, just kind of be, be the best we can be and continue on with that. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Moving on to item number six, is there a motion to approve the five-year forecast and related assumptions as prepared by Treasurer Mark Phillips?
I will move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and talk about it. As Mrs. Berger highlighted the goals of Board of Education, Goal Three is to actually demonstrate your financial responsibility. I think that the five-year forecast is a good tool to help the board stay on track to accomplish that goal. If you look at the actual landscape forecast, at the very bottom, you'll see sort of a purple line that goes across. And I think that demonstrates that you're sticking to or accomplishing Goal Three. To go five years across the forecast and maintain a positive cash balance is not common for school districts, at least not common for the districts that I've worked for in my fifteen-year career. So, at a very high level, I mean, if I didn't have my mask on that day, I think you'd see me smiling. I'm smiling now. It's, we're in a good position. And I would like to do stuff there. But I will highlight some of the assumptions that are factored into the forecast. Those tend to. They may sound negative when I'm talking about them, but what I'm going to do is talk about things that could make the forecast turn the opposite way, look a little bit worse. But again, don't forget, I'm smiling right now. Happy with where we're at. So, if you look at the notes, the actual written paper, I'm just going to read this first sentence. It's highlighted, "It's impossible to avoid deficit spending when revenues are flatlined and expenses continue to increase." So, just if you were to look at your personal finances, if your salary was frozen year after year after year, you know that gas continues to increase, everything falls smart. And it's the same thing if you look at the school district's forecast. So, what causes us to have that sort of salary freeze or that flatline revenue? If, if you look at the forecast, the first line, general property taxes. Taxes only increase every three years, and that will only take place if property values go up. So, we're counting on the fact that every three years that we're going to see an increase in property values. I'm currently projecting an eight percent increase in this forecast for the next reappraisal. If that holds true, and the numbers hold true, and the forecast stays the way it is. If something happens to the economy, the housing market, and sales go down, then obviously that will have a negative effect on the forecast. The second thing was the, the Rover Pipeline and how the Rover Pipeline's appeals affect the collections of the taxes associated with the pipeline. We really don't know how this is going to play out. And again, it's likely to be into calendar 2024 until we actually see a resolution around the pipeline and their appeals. The last thing, and again, for the last piece of the revenue side that I've been talking about for years is the fact that we are a guaranteed district. And that essentially means that when you look at the state foundation funding we receive, it is frozen or flatlined and does not increase at all from year to year to year. So, again, when you take into account all of those revenues and the fact that there's not a lot of upward movement in them over time, that's why we're given this position where eventually we're going to be in deficit spending. It's highly likely that that's going to start next year at some level.
Mark, what year is it that that three-year tax changes then? Is that done in 2023? For the property tax, is that where that next?
Yes. I mean, it's, it takes place in calendar twenty-two, so it stretches over two fiscal years. Our fiscal years go, we're obviously July one to June thirty, so it straddles that. But it would be during calendar twenty twenty.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Hey, can I just say something? I forgot. Mark, thank you for doing such an excellent job of keeping us on track, watching our money, and being fiscally responsible. On behalf of the whole board, we always say how much we appreciate you, but we need to say it publicly. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number seven, is there a motion to approve the following resolution? Whereas Mr. Richard Gooding, a board member of Tuskegee Valley Local Schools, has served the district with distinction, and whereas Mr. Gooding has dedicated his time for the betterment of the students and community, and whereas Mr. Gooding has proven to be dedicated to the craft of board governance through his commitment to training, service, and governance skills. And whereas such measures have advanced student achievement in the district and improved the governance of the district, therefore be it, resolve that the Board of Education of Tuscarawas Valley Local Schools nominates Mr. Richard Gooding for the Ohio School Boards Association Recognition Award. Do I have a motion? Should I make the motion? Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Oh, I'm staying.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Item number eight, I'd like to add, the approved the following resolution. Whereas Mrs. Sally Green, board, a board member of Tuskegee Valley Local Schools, has served the district with distinction, and whereas Mrs. Green has dedicated her time for the betterment of the students and community, and whereas Mrs. Green has proven to be dedicated to the craft of board governance through her commitment of training, service, and governance skills. And whereas such measures have advanced student achievement in the district and improved the governance of the district, therefore be it, resolve that the Board of Education of Tuscarawas Valley Local Schools nominates Mrs. Sally Green for the Ohio School Boards Association Recognition Award. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
I guess I forgot to ask if there was any discussion on it the last time, but I just want to say thank you to both of you. You're good mentors. You've been on this board, providing good leadership. And thank you. You deserve this.
We don't do it for the awards. We do it for the kids.
You do. That's why I'm nominating. We're nominating you. Roll, please call the roll.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Um, okay. Item number nine, is there a motion to approve ratification of the negotiated agreement between the Tuscarawas Valley Local Schools Board of Education and Tuscarawas Valley Teachers Association effective June, July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, with a two percent wage increase for each year of the three-year negotiated agreement and a one-time, one percent signing bonus of each association member's salary indicated in the salary index payable August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Item number ten, is our leadership's report, is there anything you'd like highlighted from your submitted reports or make any corrections or additions? Dr. Varansky?
No, we're just closing up this year and getting ready for next year. And I will share, we had a small team that were, was able to go to the Ohio Middle Level Association last week. That's the first time we went to an in-person conference since early 2020. It was so good to be with school districts from across the state. We took four teachers, and they got lots of great ideas. They were talking about what they're going to do next year. So, we appreciate the ability to be able to do those things.
That's great.
Yes, Derek did get an award at that.
Yes, he did.
Yes, Derek received the Ohio Middle Level Association Excellence Award for leadership and initiatives specifically related to the Twenty-First Century and the after-school program, the Twenty-First Century Grant and that leadership. So, yeah, you saw, you saw a picture of Dr. Varansky on our social media. So, congratulations once again, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Green.
Chairman, Mr. President. Derek, we just, we really appreciate everything you do for the curriculum and all this. So, just thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I just want to point out you were a Tuskegee Valley student.
Yes.
We're glad to see you here. Now, Mr. Phillips is not here. Mrs. Knowles, any?
You know, these Andrew and I are going to start interviewing math teachers this week. And then Jason and I have interviewed secretaries, as you saw in your report. And then we're going to start interviewing science teachers. So, we're just trying to get things moving before people are picked up by other districts. So, that's really administratively our focus right now. But for the kids, we're just having a lot of fun. We've got a lot of good things planned, and they're very excited about it. And hopefully, the weather holds up, so we can enjoy a lot of them. So, nope, everything's good. Thank you.
Very good. Mrs. Clements? Mrs. Clements?
I just kind of echo Mrs. Knowles. Every day, the calendar is full with activities. We are starting our transition to next building, so our fourth graders coming up to fifth grade by the end of the week, first graders, the next week are going to the intermediate building just to learn the layout of the building, try to ease their minds, and Miss Amidola, our guidance counselor, is working hard to try to make those transitions happen and work through things with kids. This really isn't an elementary thing, but I wanted to recognize, because I know he won't say anything, Mr. Spielman. Today, we had our first round of tournament games for softball, and it would not have happened without the work of Mr. Spielman. Over the last couple of weeks, he has been out there every day busting his, because, I mean, we've had so much rain, and of course, our softball fields are in that hole, and so it holds water, and so he's out there every day trying to make sure that our girls can get out there and play. And being a senior mom, it means a lot that he works so hard on those fields, so I do appreciate it. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Andrea.
And Mr. Spielman?
I really don't have anything else to add. We're just gearing up for summer, waiting to get the kids out here.
Get some things done.
I know the bus drivers, they're going to be leaving for a while. They've had a stressful year, kind of get on a mask, and kids to wear a mask, and no, you can't ride the bus, and then the parents are hollering, yeah, they need to ride a bus, so, but no, it's been, you know, a rough year, but we got through it, you know, we're getting the kids here, and, you know, we're just ready to take a break, get back to basics, and, you know, start cleaning the schools and taking a breather a little bit.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held June 14, 2021, 7:00 PM here at the Tuskegee Valley High School Progen Center. And also, just want to make sure that we invite everybody out to our groundbreaking ceremony on May 26th here on our new lot, 6:30 back there. Sounds like it's going to be a great time, and hope to see a good community turnout.
The district promotional video, sharing the history of the district as well as vision for the future, has been released, and we continue to hear great feedback regarding that. I was stopped at the baseball field, and someone came over and said, you know, my so-and-so is, you know, that was my great, great, whatever, on the picture of the cheerleaders. And so, it's really touching a lot of lives and causing folks to remember and to celebrate. So, we're thankful for that, and you'll also, you will soon see the release of other shorter videos that represent the story of each of our buildings. And I really want to commend Heidi Varansky and Derek Varansky and a team of staff and children, students, that have helped pull all of that together. And the district video was a gift of editing and time from New Point Community Church. That was an act of service from them for the district, so really pleased for that. The district video is now on the website, and it's also out through social media. Yes.
Item number 12, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm going to call them.
Is there a second?
Sir?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Hey, can I just say something? I forgot. Mark, thank you for doing such an excellent job of keeping us on track, watching our money, and being fiscally responsible. On behalf of the whole board, we always say how much we appreciate you, but we need to say it publicly. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, is there a motion to approve the following resolution? Whereas Mr. Richard Gooding, a board member of Tuskegee Valley Local Schools, has served